All right, camera's on. We're back in our work session. Who wants to lead off the work session today?
That would be me.
Well, I suppose that's me. Well, Commissioners, you know, the last two weeks, we've had Bill come in and talk about the CIP. We've had Aaron come in and talk about his building program. Just to
Bob come in and talk about LACAS.
So that you can, as a, so that the commission can start to see, there are expenditures that we have that we will not, we don't have funding for. And we've, we've never funded them fully. They've been underfunded probably since the creation of the county back in the 1800s. So it's not getting any better. And that's kind of why we started with those two items. We've also talked about what's happening with this building when we had Aaron up here. Yesterday and the day before, we were doing the evaluation on the building. It'll be a few weeks before we get a report back on that and get some numbers for that. So that was kind of actually the kickoff for the budget. But today, I wanted to talk more and get a little more focused on what the commission sees or the goals that you want to see as we take the budget process to the department I sent out an email several weeks ago, probably a couple of months ago now, about the, our valuation and, you know, our, a lot of our budget's tied to ad lib loan property taxes. So if we want to maintain a flat mill levy, we have to stay somewhere in that valuation process. The problem being that only about 50% or so of our revenue comes from ad lib loan taxes. So even though you may see, I think the appraiser reported that our overall valuation is going to, is up about 4.5%, and that'll move a little bit between now and the actual budget. But our valuation's up four and a half percent, but we only can gain from that revenue-wise around two and a half percent, two and a quarter to two and a half percent, depending upon the fund. So if we're going to maintain a flat mill levy, you, you have to either stay within that two and a half percent because our other revenue streams are not going up. They're, they're pretty much flat so far. We're on track on our budget, and some of them are going down, but so far, we're just going, the trend right now, we're looking at is they're flat.
Sales taxes are flat.
So, sales, and sales taxes are not, we don't, we're not, that won't be part of this conversation because the sales tax is used specifically for the CIP.
Right.
So it doesn't have operational expenditures like wages, lights.
But it does impact the budget.
It impacts that portion of the budget, but not the overall budget. So, but our other revenues are basically flat. And I'm going to get sidetracked because of what you just said.
Sorry.
The state, we just have the state revenue report, and they actually are down in their revenue, which is sales tax. So they're reporting that they're down. So I had sent out an email to the department head saying, "Plan on a two and a half percent increase, no more." And that's because I'm trying to get them at a flat mill levy. And I don't know that that's going to do it. And here, and here's why. And I shared with you last week an email about something that, another thing that's kind of out of our control, and that's our insurance. So our insurance premium, we don't have our renewal yet. We won't have it for another week or so. But our insurance premium is, the amount we pay is going to go up significantly. I'm not going to necessarily put a number on it yet, but I believe it'll be in excess of a million dollars. So that has, is something that is much more than two and a half percent. So when we have to absorb that increase, that means somewhere else, I have to go up less than two and a half percent or even decrease. So I'm, I'm starting this off with the bad news, obviously, so that we all understand. This is a challenging, the 2025 budget is going to be a challenging budget for Leavenworth County. Not that the other ones weren't challenging, but this one's going to be a real, a real head-scratcher in some cases. The conversations we're going to have when it comes to the budget are more than likely going to be, what areas, in order to, to keep a flat mill levy, what areas are we looking at reductions in to maintain a flat mill levy? So you're, I want you to keep that in mind as we have this, this next conversation when I'm asking you, what's your goal? What do you want us to be? Is it a flat mill levy? Is it a reduction in the mill levy like we've had in the past? You know, we've done a quarter a mill to an eighth of a mill from year to year. What message do you want me to send to the department heads? And are there projects that you want to make sure that are included, that we don't remove from the budget? Or new projects that you want us to take on? The other thing, and I failed to mention it because I got sidetracked, I'm going to blame Commissioner Stephen on that. The CPI currently is 3.2%. What I'm asking the department heads to stay within is 2.5%, which already reflects then a reduction in our expenditures. And that, and we all know that that CPI is not accurate for the operation
For what we do.
Of the county.
Yeah.
You know, we, we've seen double-digit increases on equipment, on the materials we use for road maintenance, on health insurance. Those are the things that impact our budget, not the CPI necessarily as much. But, so you're looking at, to maintain, just to maintain a flat mill levy, there will be reductions in the budget. And to maintain a flat mill levy, 2.5% is our maximum increase. Well, the things that the departments don't necessarily budget for are the health insurance. We take care of that through the benefits plan, the benefits fund. So I'm looking at, just to stay flat mill levy, we are looking at reductions in expenditures in other locations. And I just want to get that out there to you right now.
So are we looking at not, I mean, you know, instead of potential layoffs, not filling open positions? Is that something that we're talking about with the different departments?
I absolutely think that needs to be on the table. The open positions. Now, so here's the challenge, and, and I think I'm not, this isn't news to any of the departments, right? Most of our departments are very small. So any significant changes, you can't get them out of those departments. I mean, if, if your entire budget is less than $300,000
Right.
And most of that's wages, you can't make much of a reduction. There are two departments that make up 70% of your budget. So in the past, those two departments have pretty much been, leave them alone. And obviously, that is the sheriff's office and your road and bridge department. Those are your two biggest funds. Just, it has to be that way because of staff and expenditures.
Well, then, right now
So if, if you're looking at any kind of reduction, you have to look at those departments, as well as the other ones. I'm not saying that everybody else is held harmless, but you have to look at those departments. That, that's just a given. If you're looking at holding the line in those departments, you are likely looking at a mill levy increase. And that's why I want to start the conversation today in April instead of in July.
I just, you know, and for right now, I know that EMS is, is, they're short, I mean, they, they need to fill positions, and we don't want to eliminate their ability to fill those.
Those types of positions can't be eliminated.
Yeah, those are essential positions that we can't
That's the thing that, yeah.
Right.
And they're, they're normally full, they just roll over.
Right. I'm just saying that those are essential positions that we can't mess with because that's public safety and all those things.
There, there aren't. So, and I know I said essential, but there aren't a lot of non-essential positions.
No, I know that.
Because we have reduced
County Commissioners.
That was why I was kind of trying to put it
We have reduced over time. You know, there, there are some, and again, reducing those means a reduction in services.
I was trying to get you there. That was why I was
The decision is, is what services do you no longer offer if you want to reduce those positions?
That's why I was asking you for those questions.
That's really the, the conversation.
Well, I was here, so was Jeff, so was Janet, in 2008, when we did the reduction in force. And it's taken a long time to catch up from that. And I'm, I'm glad we're doing this early, but we also don't know what the impact of what the legislature's going to do either. So there could be some legislation get passed that will impact this even worse.
Absolutely.
There was legislation on the table this year that would have taken 10% of our ad lib loan taxes off right away. That was presented by one of our local representatives. That got removed, and different legislation is out there. But some of the legislation that's still potentially pending could definitely impact revenue for
Right.
And, and it could, even the sales tax portion of our revenue could be affected by this.
Yes.
And then when we can't make the payments on our bonds for our sales tax project, we got to get some money somewhere else. But no, we're, I don't know.
So what's the bad news?
Yeah. What's the
I thought that was the good news.
What's the good news?
Well, the good news is that I'm giving you plenty of time to take this into consideration before it becomes the brutal reality that it's going to be in July.
We have the bad news. Oh, that lady did a good.
The good news.
Yeah. The good news is we're starting early to talk about the bad news.
The answer is there really is no good news. It's already bad.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Last year, you asked the departments to come in at 4%. They came in at 15%, and then we went through the process, and we got it down to 7.8%. So even if we today say, in order to have a flat mill levy, we got to have everybody come in at 2.5%, well, I mean, there's no way, I mean
But 2.5% isn't enough.
They're not going to come in at, all these agencies aren't going to, I mean, if they come in at 15%, or we're going to be back where we were.
So let me, let me correct that a little bit. What was presented to me was 15%, what was presented to you was seven and a half percent. But during that timeframe, I had asked them to try to stay at the 4% because that was what the CPI was at the time. But what the goal of the board was, is to maintain a flat mill levy. And the flat mill levy allowed us at the 7.5%. And in fact, we actually reduced the mill levy a little bit. So that was the real goal. I put that out there so that we didn't have to come in and make drastic changes. And most of the departments, by the way, hit that.
Yes.
And if you recall, the biggest portion of that seven and a half percent was in road and bridge, and that's where the county commission had asked to increase funding. And actually wanted more funding, but we couldn't afford it. So
And the sheriff actually came under.
Yeah. So actually, the biggest portion of the budget came in at the 4%. It was really road and bridge where we spent the extra money and, on roads, not on staff, not on anything, on the roads and on the equipment to maintain the roads. So that, just being fair, the departments did not come in and slap us
That's right.
And, and hold the line. This year, when I say two and a half percent, if the board says, really what I'm looking for, do you want me to keep the flat mill levy? I've told the departments two and a half percent. It may not be two and a half percent. I mean, honestly, it may not be that when we get down to, we finally get all the revenues and all the people who have appealed their property valuations are all settled. It may be a little less than that. But if the board is telling me, we want a flat mill levy, then that's what I will bring you. And that's what I do every year. I bring a budget that represents what the board tells me is your goal. Now, in the past, three or four years, that, that target changed after we did the budget.
Right.
So I understand that. But I'm just trying to get the board's idea because this is not going to be a fun conversation with the departments. And I have to know for sure where you stand on this because when I say, "You're not presenting that budget," I'm going to get some pushback from certain departments, I'm sure.
What month will we actually know about the health insurance increases?
Well, we'll know in, within a few weeks. That's what they're saying. Now, we'll know what the, our renewal is. We'll have to make a decision on whether or not we stick there or go out for bid. If we go out for proposals on our insurance, that's probably another three weeks to a month. But
But what's the likelihood that we're going to get a better price, is the question.
We should, yeah, we'll have it before June. We'll have, we'll have that before June.
Legislature, the abessation, maybe, unless they get called back.
Yeah.
Well. So what about the, the flying ointment to me is, of course, the insurance, but the building. How do you intend to handle the building?
That's a great question, and that's why I'm saying it may not be two and a half percent for some of these departments. Some of these expenditures that we're having that are unavoidable, we can't, we can't just put the orange fence up all the way, oh, we could.
Well, we could.
I take that back. We shouldn't probably just put the orange fence up all around the building and let it see how long it lasts before it all falls off. So those are things that we're going to have to fund and finance, and those are, right now, that's not a budgeted expenditure. But I think we have funds available. Now, that means dipping into our reserves that are for other things and then eventually paying the reserves back. So I'll, we will work through that at a staff level and address it because that's going to be this year. That's not going to be next year.
Right.
A, a big portion of it. There's going to be an expense going forward that we'll take care of. I, I think that if the, if the commission's intent is that, hold the line, flat mill levy, that's the message we've typically delivered. It's just going to be tougher this year because a flat mill levy is only going to generate about two and a half percent increase in our total revenue. Whereas in the past, like a seven and a half percent increase in that revenue actually increased about four and a half percent or 4% of our total revenue.
Yeah, Mark, you got to start somewhere. As far, as far as me speaking, I think the flat mill levy is where I'd at least like to start. Just my opinion. I know we got some big things, we may have to go back and forth, but we need a starting point for you, so.
The one-time expenditures are things that we can typically address. It's the ongoing, the salaries, the insurance, the utilities. You know, our daily operational expenditures are the tough ones because they're forever.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll only fix the, the outside of this building once, whereas, you know, the staff member is every year going
Right.
But just always keep remembering that whenever you delay, doing things like the building
And roads and bridges.
And, well, that costs more money ultimately. You're going to spend more money.
Pay me now or pay me later.
Right. Oh, pay more later, not me.
Pay more later.
Yeah, that's right.
Pay me now or pay more later. I mean, it's, it, that's just the way that it is. So
What a difficult position for our county commissioner, in my opinion, is, and I've learned this over these years, is that we do not have authority over some of the departments that are elected officials. And those departments represent the bulk of our budget.
Yeah, but we set the budget.
We, we do, but we're limited.
And we can be challenged.
Yeah, it can be challenged, but still, sometimes you got to take your heart and think. I, I think most of them do a real good job. But you're allowed to set the budget, and if you want to go across the street and get challenged, that's fine, but it's pretty tough right now. This is, I just shake my head on this year's budget, and we've had some tough ones, but this one is just
Uh, this is the toughest one I remember.
Yeah.
Well, except for '08. '08
'08 was it? Yeah. I was in Lansing, that was, yeah.
And then, really, if you do go into the internals of some of those other budgets, I think there's, I think there's ways to make some savings.
But that's their determination to make those decisions in their budget that they bring to us, not the other way around.
But we have the ability to limit what the number is.
You do.
Right.
But I think, and I think that's what I'm saying, is that you need to give that, the message is to all the department heads. I'm not going to single out any department head, but the message is to all the department heads.
Right.
And that is, here's where we need to stay. And so do that.
Yeah.
And they, you know, now, your elected department heads could come back and say, "No, we're not going to." And then it becomes a different kind of a fight. I don't think that will happen. I mean, I don't, that hasn't happened in the past where they've, where anybody has really bucked the direction of the board. But, so I don't think it will happen. I just, but they need to know, everybody needs to know, that this is the direction for the board.
Right.
We're not raising the mill levy. And, you know, I'm a little soapbox here. Each year when we reduce the mill levy, if you'll recall, I may have said something to the effect of, it's not good to reduce the mill levy in good years because you're never going to increase it in a bad year. And this is an example of a bad year, a tough year. We're not, I, I don't see this commission, I'm not, I shouldn't try to speak for you, but I don't see this commission voting to increase the mill levy in a year that's tough. And that's why holding the line on a flat mill levy is always preferable from a staff level.
I agree.
I know from the other side of that dais that certain things have to happen. So I get it.
So if you're looking at it from the perspective of the taxpayer, and you have a house that's $300,000, and now they value it at $550,000, you're paying all these taxes, and you're maybe a widow, and you're trying to stay in your home. That's what you got to look at, too.
Absolutely, and that's why I mean, there's always the other side of the dais here. We get it. And, you know, those valuations are not, this, I guess, is a good time to talk, those valuations are not driven by staff.
But we know that.
But the taxes are, right? So whether your valuation is 300,000 or 100,000, the cost of doing business of the government stays the same. It's your share of that cost that changes. So when your share used to be the $100,000 valuation, and now you're up to the 300,000, your share of that cost is much higher than what it used to be. And that's why the, this commission supported the
Plan.
The, holding the line on your valuation increases, the constitutional amendment. One or the other, that's why it was supported. Because the cost of doing government wasn't going to change by that constitutional amendment. What was going to change is who pays
Your share for it.
So the people who are out there paying $500,000 for that house that used to be $200,000 are the ones who are picking up the biggest bulk of that cost, of that change, rather than the people who have lived in their house for 30 years and so on, so.
So, oh, go ahead, yeah. I was just going to say, so all we got to do is cut out the wasteful spending and only spend money on the important stuff. It's that easy. Simple.
We already did that 30 years ago.
It's all we got to do. It's just that easy. So the problem is, people want to see that this year or next year. They want to see what we're doing to cut this year. The problem is, I can tell you personally, for the last 30-plus years, we have done that exact thing every single year. It's the same budget. It's the same budget we're talking about. It's not a new budget, it's not somebody else's budget. It's the same budget every year that we've been chopping and dicing and cutting for 30 years, every year. We have reached a minimum level of acceptable assets and services in every department. By chopping, we, we cut the health department out, we cut 5% off the budget every year for four years, which by the time you compound that, it's about a 35% cut over five years. We had a reduction in force, we fired people, we laid people off, we didn't hire people for open jobs, we combined departments, we eliminated department heads, benefit cuts, got rid of the juvenile jail. I mean, we've done all these things over 30 years that have to count. You've got to take those into account, that we have done this every year for 30 years. So we have now reached the minimum level. You cut one more thing, and the way we came to that is you keep cutting and keep cutting until the public outcry is so loud, you back up one step. You're like, "Oh, we cut that a little bit too much." So we back up one step. That's where we're at. So what I use for a guideline is the cost of living. Do I agree with it's accurate? No. 3.2%? That's a joke. Probably more like 20%. But it's the only thing we can really put our hands on. So to me, the mill levy is kind of irrelevant. It's, the cost of doing business is what it is, period. You want to remove snow or don't remove snow. You want a paved road, you don't want a paved road. The cost of doing business is what it is. If we can tie that to the CPI, say it's 3.2%, this is what I use for a guide every year, just me personally. The budget, to, to maintain what you had last year, assets and services, just the same, not adding anything, just keeping the same, has to go up, the cost of living. What that percentage is, I think is, is a guess, but it is 3.2 on paper. So I say, as long as we come in under the 3.2%, we have done our due diligence to keep the minimal same services and assets we had the year before without cutting any more services to our people. And that's my whole point, is stop asking to cut services to yourselves. All the county does is take every penny of the taxes you pay and convert it to assets and services for the taxpayer. That's all we do. We don't have some extra funds that we go send to Ukraine or whatever. That's all we do, is maintain the same thing we had the year before. And if it costs 3.2% this year to do that, that's what we've got to spend. Or, like Mark says, going to have to start cutting some unimportant things that, man, I
We don't have 4.4 billion dollars sitting in the bank.
Well, when are you? You know, of course, I've been around for a while, and it's always road and bridge. It seemed like it got, because it was the largest budget.
Easiest to not see right now.
And, you know, since when I started here in 1982 till now, we should have built 126 bridges, and we've only built 65. So we're behind on the bridge program.
And, and people keep saying, "Well, if I got to tighten my personal budget, the county needs to tighten their budget. If I don't have enough money to pay my taxes, they don't."
Well, we will because we will close a road because the bridge is falling.
And that's, that's what they're, they don't realize they're saying.
That's where we're heading.
Yep.
That is exactly where we're heading. And we've had studies, what it takes to maintain a mile road, maintain a gravel road, maintain a paved road, maintain bridges. We've got all that information out there, and we're not funding roads like they should.
That's right. And when people
And we haven't, forever.
We need to make those, those types of, that type of information understandable and accessible so that people really see it. This is exactly what it costs. We're not trying to gouge the, the taxpayer. We are only spending exactly what we need to do
But it's not completely true. Because the part that's not true is, for instance, last year, we took the 1.2 million from the increase, and where did we make the cut? Public Works. But we didn't, we did not touch any of the other larger departments at all that, that carried a bulk of government. For instance, one of our departments grew 75% in spending over the last five years. We haven't touched that department at all, and the fact is
That's not completely correct, Mike, though. That really is
It really is. The numbers are really there. You look at the, the numbers are. And we went over the budget in the hearings, and it was, has gone up to 2.4 million.
But what you're not looking at, Mike, is the 10 years prior to that five.
Right. Where
Well, they've got to take the five years that I've been, I mean, you
That's the problem, right there, is you're only considering the five years you've been.
You're being myopic.
I'm not being myopic. I look very closely at these budgets. That's not myopic.
So am I. So do I. We all do, Mike, but we all also look at what happened and what was happening prior when people are not budgeting what they actually need
That is exactly
To operate properly, including our roads and bridges, include all of those things for votes. I mean, that is what
And that's the part of trying to get a
The bottom line is, is that we can't, you know, we have cut our own throats on our road and bridges. We have cut our own throats trying to, to appease
Keep people's taxes low.
And, and which is what, part of what we need to do, yes. But at some point, it hits a tipping point to where the, like, people like the, the department you're talking about can't keep help, that they're losing more than what they're gaining, that they're not
Because of their practices, the 10 years prior to the last five.
Well, when you're doing a budget, you have to look at all the parts of it. And if, if I look at that budget that I'm talking about across the street, I look, and you know, when we did the budget process, how much money every year was going back into the general fund.
Right.
That was from those, and we, and we had a long discussion about that, and that is an important part of budgeting. And then the other part, when you look at the other department across the street, when And then the other part, when you look at the other department across the street, when the numbers have gone up so high, 75%, and then we say, we've got this 70% of the budget, and we're not going to touch that, but we're going to go to public works, the roads, bridges, infrastructure, and we're going to take a million point two out of that, but we're not going to touch the rest of this budget because they're elected officials.
But when that budget, when it's not expended, goes into the general fund, as a, that helps our budget.
And for me, it's not so much.
But when you do a carryover, they should, they should be spending approximately what they budgeted. You shouldn't be having a big sandbag amount.
But if there's, if they're not filling positions because they can't find the people to fill the positions and.
Because they don't pay enough.
But, but that you know that that, at some point in time, might be filled, you have to have within your budget to do that. I'm just, I'm saying, you have to look at more than just this. Because you have to begin to examine what brought us to this point. What brought us to the point where? And so, what has brought us to the point where we are not building enough bridges, where we're not finishing the roads that, that we have, you know, programmed to do? All of those things is why. And it is because poor management or poor decisions, whatever you want to look at in the past, have resulted in us paying the consequences and the taxpayers ultimately paying the consequences. Because now, every time that we have to do something that could have been done 15 years ago and should have been, and we're just now getting ready to do it, we're paying 20 times more money.
That's exactly right. We've saved people $5 in the past.
And I don't disagree with you. In fact, I, I 100% support forward-thinking budgets.
Yeah.
But when we're looking at doing the next budget, which is what we have to look at now, I, I understand, you've got to look back, but we're looking at the next budget, everybody has to participate at whatever number you pick.
But they did.
3.2 or 2.5, everybody has to be on board, and that would give us a fair participation instead of going into public works.
I agree, I agree.
But I think they did.
I mean, you say everybody.
They came to us.
For us to save money for the taxpayer, it's going to have to be the school district, the city, the township.
And that's what people don't understand.
Right.
If everybody did what the county did, it does.
Right.
People's taxes would be low.
That's right.
And, and that's really, for the folks that are watching this, that's really the confusion. People think Leavenworth County controls your taxes.
And we don't.
We control, what, 26%?
But we have cut our own throats to try to bring those things down to the point where we're not operating the way that we should have been to begin with, is what I'm trying to get across.
Exactly right. Because we tried to save them $5 10 years ago, now it's costing us $100 to make up for it.
And, you know, I, I have to say, the five years I've been on the commission, I'm fairly proud of the budgets we've passed.
And I am, too.
We, we have funded healthy raises for the county employees every year. We have maintained either a level or reduced slightly the mill levy. It's so, but, but I understand, but this one's hard when, if we can get everybody to come in, even if the, across the street would say, we'll come in at 3.2 or in, it's going to, we've got to come to where everybody's working together on this.
But I think that they have come to us in that, I mean, and.
And I'm not complaining that.
I'm, I'm saying, but what I'm saying, and I'm trying to get across to people, is that, as Jeff just said, we're behind. We're not where we should be. So when we, even when we lower the mill, we are still cutting our throats because we are not fulfilling needs that, that should have already been taken care of and that are compounding.
Well, I think, I think.
I think there's a difference in wants.
I think Mark's looking, you're making, you're making great points, but I think Mark needs direction on what he wants to start the figures with. So I think that's where we need to get to.
And when I said the 3.2% cost CPI that I use for myself, I wasn't meaning you go back and ask the department heads for 3.2, because I understand what you're saying. You want them to be 2.5 so that we can end up at the bottom line at 3.2.
It's a starting point.
That's the starting point. That's the direction you need to move forward with, in my opinion.
And just something to, like, just kind of reinforce a little bit what you guys are talking about and why cuts were made 20 years ago. I, you know, not inconsequential that around the same time the LA VTR went away.
Amongst other things.
Our reliance on the adverbal taxes, like, when I say right now, it's, it's a little over 50% of our revenue is adverbal taxes. Back then, it was more like 30% of our revenue was adverbal taxes.
Yep.
So that's the other thing that's happening, is not just your valuation has increased, but the amount we rely on it has increased.
1%.
Well, why has that changed?
Exempt this group and exempt that group.
The state, well, not just exemptions, the state has just flat removed, flat taken away money that they were giving us from their sales tax.
Right.
They just took it away. Then they exempt people from property taxes, so it pushes more on to the people who are left. That, that's a big one, right there, too.
And we're continuing to do it again.
There are pages. The business machinery exemption, that, all the, all that equipment that they used to pay taxes on just went away one year. And it really was just one year because they didn't, they said they were going to pay the slider and they never.
Well, they stayed six months.
Yeah.
They paid six months and they're going to pay 10 years.
I think it was seven years or something like that, but anyway, they made one payment. So that, that happened.
I wonder why we don't trust the legislature.
The, the mortgage registration fees changed.
Mortgage registration was the bigger for this county.
When you start adding that stuff up, then add in the mandated but unfunded things that the county has to do for the state. Add those back in. All of that increases the local taxation. The state doesn't have to take responsibility for it, even though those of us who are here realize it. They don't take responsibility for increasing property taxes, but the majority of our increases have come from Topeka.
And that's 100% the problem, is people aren't concentrating on where the issue can be fixed. They're just yelling at the closest, easiest people to yell at, which is why.
Which is why we need change in groups representing us.
That's not getting fixed.
I wish you had two checks, one to the school district, one to the county.
That would be better.
Figure it out real quick.
I, I think that what I'm hearing is that the flat mill levy is our goal. We would like to keep our overall expenditures at the CPI, but that means that really 2.5% because of the things that are outside of those budgets.
Yeah, that are outside of our control. I mean, that's, it's just to me, we, we're already so far behind that we can't afford to get any farther behind, is the point I'm trying to make.
And that's exactly right. And we're not having conversations like, where are we going to build a new kid skatepark? Or where are we going to do the new walking trail? We don't even have those conversations. We have, are we going to cut?
How are we going to survive?
Yeah, are we going to, are we going to cut out snow removal on the roads?
Right.
Well, even at the CPI, I understand, if, at Road and Bridge, if we do die on Road and Bridge, that means fewer miles of chip and seal projects that are going to happen because they didn't go up by the CPI, I can promise you.
Right.
So that, those are, those are still going to be reductions.
Yeah.
A, holding the line budget still means a reduction because our CPI, our cost of doing business is much higher than CPI.
Which is the point I'm trying to make, is we, that we have cut our own throats.
Yep.
Well, so, gravel, gravel roads are, are cheaper to maintain, and that's about all I can say.
Well, they are till you get to a certain traffic.
Right.
So, so can I just say a couple things to pump us up? I want to go over how many road projects that Leavenworth County's done. How, how much did we spend in, in Baser? We spent $2 million, and what was the total project?
I think the total project's 12, it's 11 something.
And then if, when County Road 30 is completed, what will that?
That's, that's another approximately $12 million.
And then on Tonganoxie Road, the improvements?
That I don't remember off the top of my head.
Oh, we've spent $7 million on dust debatement roads in the last five years.
Yep.
All in the south area of the county. We've made more improvements on roads than any time in my memory.
Yes.
And this is positive. So the county has done some positive things even under all this budget pressure.
I mean, but because we've also been fortunate enough to be granted nice grant funding to help supplement that.
But we're getting to where we can.
And having staff that's working their buns off.
Was all that money spent in the north end of the county or the south end? I don't remember.
It was, well, County Road 30's, then it'll be a good mix.
You got what you needed, Mark?
Yeah, I did.